Thank you for coming. Fifteen hundred and sixty-sixth Regular Meeting of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Saint Anne, Missouri, being held at City Hall on Monday. This is our report twenty twenty-three to seven P M. Alderman Shai, would you like to read the board?
The United States of America, in the Republic of Washington, one nation, one government, and individual, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, I want to inform the audience of the agendas. The public speaker cards available in the back of the room. If a resident would like to address the board during the public comments section of the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and have it ready. I want to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Aldermen and Public Comments will be entertained during specific times set aside during the agenda. Public comment on agenda items? Is there any public comment on agenda items? Okay, hearing none. We will now open a public hearing for the twenty twenty-four combined funds budget. Matt?
We have the budget, we went over it thoroughly in the committee meeting. It has a slight positive fund balance for the year. We had a large transfer out of the general fund into the park fund to take care of buying the replacement equipment that flooded at the golf course. So we'll finish doing that next year. We received over five hundred thousand dollars from FEMA specifically for that purpose. So that was a, the government does not make it easy to go through the process. So that was basically a year's process to go through their setup. We did that in addition to doing our regular job. So we got that done, the money isn't back.
Okay, does the board have any more questions? Okay, are there any proponents or opponents in the audience? Any questions from the audience? Good. Hearing none, I need a motion for a first and a second. All in favor? The twenty twenty-four combined funds budget is approved. Oh, yeah. All right, closing that one and reopening. We will now hold a public hearing for a special use permit for thirty-six oh nine eighty road, a stationary food truck. Are there any proponents in the room?
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
I'm great. Come before you, we have a food truck you guys pre-approved. We went, and this is just to add liquor slushies, not alcoholic slushies, to the food truck. And we're asking if we can get a liquor license for that, special use permit.
You guys have any questions?
Mayor, Mayor, the board, remember the previous comment about us having a previous employer who now works for electric control. So we talked to Chris and contacted Brad Norris. Some of these guys know him, and everything was checked out. Unless you need to add something, Chris?
Well, the amendment tonight is for the special use to allow for the sale of the alcohol, not the actual liquor license itself.
And on the police department side, there's absolutely nothing, zero. They're great business owners, excellent people, and I think everybody in the crowd knows who you are.
So, so then?
So I would have to, I think Chris Lueber explaining it today. This is just to ask for the special use permit to sell the liquor, to do that. And then I'll come back after we fill the application out. And then I think you guys have to approve it again for the liquor license itself. And I think that will be in January, right, Chris? Yes, so I'll see you guys again on a Monday, night in January, the new year.
You just love coming in to see.
I think so, I think so.
All right, are there any opponents? Hearing none. Need a motion for a first and a second? All in favor?
You look quick tonight, aren't you?
I'm a little on the fast side on that, I'm just nervous. All right, all in favor? All right, your special use permit is approved.
Thank you.
Closing that one. We will now hold a public hearing for a special use permit for ten four seventy-nine Saint Charles Ruppert, a takeout restaurant. Did you come on up? How are you?
Good, thank you. So we have a takeout restaurant, like wing and a sandwich and some fish. I'm sorry.
You need like sandwiches, you said?
We also sell sandwiches, but mainly is the wings.
The wings? And this is where the old bike?
It used to be a pizza place, too.
What will your hours be?
It would be lunchtime given on eleven to nine thirty.
Social media to promote it and stuff maybe, or you can get the menu out and all that?
Yeah, even a Facebook page, we can manage to help you share that information on the line. Does anyone else have any questions for? Are there any opponents? Hearing none, any a first and a second motion? All in favor? All right, special use permit for ten four seventy-nine Saint Charles Ruppert is approved. Thank you for coming on. Okay, and a fourth, public hearings. We will now hold a public hearing for amendments to the zoning regulations made in accordance with the state statute and to update various zoning regulations. Matt?
Yes, this is the zoning public hearing for the changes as part of the code recodification process of state, changes the state law with regards to, you know, certain things with the zoning. And when we recodify the code, we go through the code and make sure that all of the ordinances are in compliance with the current state statutes regarding zoning. So this just brings it into compliance with state law. We don't have any choice in this. This is state law sets the base for zoning. We have to be in compliance with that.
Okay, does the board have any questions? All right, okay, just in case the audience would like to know, you can find this code on the front of our city website at the bottom. It's a P P F. All right, can I get a first or second? All in favor? All right. We'll close out the fourth public hearing. All right, introduction of bills and resolutions. First reading of bill number thirty-four twenty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Eminem Golf Cards, for golf carts. Second reading of bill number thirty-four twenty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Eminem Golf Cards, for golf carts. Tim?
So this is just an agreement with Eminem Golf Cards. It's our current five-year lease. We're in the last year, they produce, they're the local distributor for Club Car. There's basically three large names in the golf business. Club Car is, they're, they're, they're very reliable. They've been good to us the last five years. They're gas carts as opposed to electric, so there's a little bit more longevity going in that direction. This lease would run from twenty twenty-five, September twenty-two, or September twenty twenty-four through October of twenty twenty-nine.
Well, does the board have any questions?
Is it the same amount as it was before?
No, it's a little bit more because you're getting, you're getting brand new carts. You're getting twenty twenty-five carts.
Ooh, are they going to be faster?
I don't think they, I don't think they're allowed to be faster, but they'll be newer.
Those parades.
Yeah, it's about six hundred, you pay six, six months a year, and it's about six hundred and seventy-five dollars more.
That's ten.
Are they doing logos or anything, always like golf sign in?
Yeah, we have logos on them now, actually. So they probably, I think we'll probably have to buy those in-house, but usually those are at a discounted price. And they do, unlike some, a couple of the other competing companies, they do put together tournament packages for discounted prices for rental cars.
If they're putting the decals on, we can try to see if they might be able to see what we can do it for, or what they can do it for, if they can deliver it. But the idea was to have golf sign in on all four sides of this thing. So when people are doing social media?
Sure.
That would just be free advertising when people are, okay, we're, oh, we're golf sign in, golf sign in, and the first thing that pops up is our golf boards.
Yeah, there is.
We can just get some pricing and see.
I can do some wrapping prices also. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna replace one of the novelties with information boards for tournaments and advertising on each cart, which currently on the new cart. They're not on the current carts, but they'll be on these carts.
Do they, the old carts just go back to them and they sell them?
Yeah, they'll just come and retrieve them and then they'll drive, they'll take the old ones when they drop off the new ones.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, okay, I will need a first and a second motion, please.
Second.
And Matt Rokoff?
Jay Singer. Marino. Dirk. Sparks. Murphy. Jimenez. Caroney. Shai.
All right, bill thirty-four twenty-seven becomes ordinance number thirty-three thirty-four. Number two, first reading of bill number thirty-four twenty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Gershenson Construction for storm water control work. Second reading of bill number thirty-four twenty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Gershenson Construction for storm water control work. Matt?
Yes, this is the storm water control project down at the golf course. This is funded by the M S D grant, the Water Creek Grant that we get every year. So we banked that grant to pay for most of this. We'll have one more year where we'll have to outlay the money and then get reversed from the last year. But we're part of all, we'll go ahead and get it done and hopefully get it done before the price goes up.
Okay, does the board have any questions? All right, can I have a first and a second motion, please? Matt Rokoff?
Jay Singer. Marino. Dirk. Sparks. Murphy. Jimenez. Caroney. Shai.
Okay, bill number thirty-four twenty-eight becomes ordinance number thirty-three thirty-five. Number three, the first reading of bill number thirty-four twenty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Saint Anne, Missouri approving the budget, authorizing budgeted expenditures for the budget year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. Second reading of bill number thirty-four twenty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Saint Anne, Missouri approving the budget, authorizing budgeted expenditures for the budget year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, this is the ordinance that approves the budget. We've had the public hearing, we've had a discussion of committee meetings. So this is the last step to adopt the budget.
Or any further questions? All right, I'll need a first and a second motion for passing the budget. Matt Rokoff?
Jay Singer. Marino. Dirk. Sparks. Murphy. Jimenez. Caroney. Shai.
Okay, bill number thirty-four twenty-nine becomes ordinance number thirty-three thirty-six. Approval of monthly reports and warrant lists. Can I get a first and a second or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Monthly reports are approved. All right, we now into to public comment on non-agenda items. Public comment on non-agenda items. Does anyone in the audience want to speak on anything at all?
Madam Mayor? If anyone wants to do that, I'd like to jump in here and thank the people in the food truck and the lady on the carryout restroom for deciding to stay in Saint Anne. I'm glad that you chose Saint Anne to come there to do it. So if there's anything that the city can do to help you, just come and ask it, please. Thank you.
Good. All right, closing public comment. Tim, is your?
I just wanted to remind the board of the election filings and the audience of, if you're interested in running for Alderman position, the filing begins tomorrow at eight A M.
Thanks, Chris.
And when's the last thing? December twenty-sixth. Twenty-five dollars.
Tim, did you still have a question? All right, chief, you're up.
Nobody else?
Nobody else?
First of all, I wanted to make sure that the mayor and the Board of Aldermen and the public wanted to thank Ryan and Tom, you're out there playing Santa Claus. That was incredible. So, and Tim, thank you guys so much, and Eric Alderman and the mayor for showing up. So Police Department, good job on their showing, too. Sage, can you come on up?
I brought some information on an app I want to propose for animal control and the shelter to use. I printed out some screenshots of just how the app looks when you're using it, so you guys can kind of get an idea. This is a record-keeping app that allows you to make profiles for any animal intakes and also for the owners. This helps us track how many animals there are per residence, any incidents that are animal-related at each residence, vet information, registration information for my usage only, verbal written warnings, citations issued, fees charged, all that type of stuff. It also allows us to sign photos of the animals to each residence. So that way, if we get an animal that's unidentifiable, we can search up the street there was found, and I can actually compare the dog to all the photos in the system.
So this is an app that only for us or for Saint Anne, or is it an app for anybody?
It's an app for anybody, specifically for shelter usage. Saint Charles used it in the past, so I'm familiar with it from them. It also helps us track wildlife calls, feral cat calls, basically anything animal-related. I can go in and see like a pattern for it. There's no charge for the app itself. There is a way that we can use it to charge kennel fees through the app itself, and that's a three percent per car transaction. So we talked about doing a five-dollar car charge anytime we do that. But that's going to make it a lot more convenient when collecting kennel fees and things like that instead of having to go and try and charge cash.
The world is steadily going digital.
Sage, would the volunteers be using that at all or just be using that?
It's something that we can discuss, because there are different levels that I can assign people to. So it can be admin levels, newer levels, things like that. I can also do pop-up notifications for animals. So like if you ever come in and log in, it would be a pop-up if there's a behavioral issue or a medical issue or a mess, like something that's new, they'll actually give you an alert. So we've talked about trying to get volunteers on like a lower level just so that we can go in and see all the information on the animals as they come in, too.
Right, because sometimes, you know, when we're there, you know, it's coming. So it would be handy to be able to have something other than just the sheet that we fill out for the police department.
I think volunteer access is going to be pretty wanted at first, just along with viewing access, and we talk about doing like intake commissions later. But for right now, it's mostly just going to be, you can monitor the half editing access. Everyone else would have like viewing.
Any other questions for that?
What about security and stuff like that, man?
Nice job looking under that, Sage.
So Monica here, our Lieutenant of our Detective Bureau, has been doing an awesome job as well. She is the supervisor of Sage, and Sage took over as Animal Control Supervisor last year. She's done an incredible job. And this is chief. Throughout the years, Saint Anne Animal Control and Saint Anne Pet Adoptions have worked closely together to assure the quality of life for the residents in our community and assure the safety of the animals. A C O Sage has assumed her position as the Animal Control Officer and supervisor of the kennel for almost a year, and has been done in an outstanding job in revamping protocols and looking for better ways of managing the animals that are brought in every day. Sage goes above and beyond to assure that the animals are well taken care of and that the community members are getting issues resolved, including wildlife, strays, and et cetera. Specifically, I wanted to recognize Sage for some specific incidents that occurred on the first couple of days of her well-deserved vacation. She had not taken vacation in over a year, trying to get things and making sure that the public, the board, and the Aldermen, of course, the chief, that we're all happy. Day one, Saturday, just this past Saturday, Sage was advised of a dog, actually, two weeks ago, sorry. Sage was advised of a dog named Zane who was suffering from bordatella, which is an upper respiratory virus that is very contagious. Zane is one of the dogs who is currently residing at the kennel. Sage immediately left her residence and took Zane from the kennel to the specialist, which is A V S Hospital, and obtained medical treatment. Sage then returned to the kennel and deep cleaned for over four hours to help prevent other dogs from getting infected. Day two, on Sunday, Sage was notified of a dog who was found deceased and a second dog who was still at large within the city venue. Sage left her residence to come assist with the deceased dog placement and coordinated with another jurisdiction to place a large trap for the other at-large dog to prevent any further injury. On the same day, later in the afternoon, another small dog was reported injured from a vehicle strike, and Sage came to assess the dog, transported it to a Fallon Emergency Center, and ultimately, unfortunately, it was euthanized due to the severity of the injuries. Sage has demonstrated true dedication to our community and the animals she comes into contact with. Her efforts and actions do not go unnoticed, and our community is grateful for her. And that says thank you Detective Lieutenant Monica Ruelas. So we are giving you a chief's commendation for your outstanding performance of your duties and passion for your job. But before we give you a standing ovation, because you do a really good job, I just want to let everyone know, I actually took account, and she actually put in over two hundred and sixty-eight hours free for the city. And although sometimes I tell her that that's probably not good for her and her family, she has a newborn there, and her husband actually just joined the Saint Anne Police Department in the Corrections Department. So I'm really proud of you. You show what it means to be here in Saint Anne and how much you care about this community. Congratulations. Thank you. Before we finish up, this is really important, too. Elliot, will you come on up here? A lot of, a lot of people here representing it, I've noticed. I noticed that you have Vanessa and your son back there, Vanessa and Ian, so that's nice. So why I had everybody here, we actually, Elliot retired in September, and, or I should say August, and we did not give him a send-off. There are certain things that we're trying to do now to better our employees who stay here, put in the time that you have. How many years of service did you have here in Saint Anne?
I started June of nineteen ninety-eight as a part-time jailer, thanks to an old friend of mine. Went full-time August first of two thousand.
So with at least twenty-two, twenty-three years of service, Elliot was actually a dare officer right after me and a school resource officer, and he has done a tremendous job. I know that Carla, who probably should come up here. And Carla is not only a family member of ours for Saint Anne, she is the school counselor for Drummond Elementary. So she wanted to make an appearance and say something as well before I finish up.
As Erin was saying, I, my name is Carla Robertson, and I'm a school counselor over at Drummond Elementary. And our journey with Elliot has been many, many years. He started as a dare officer in our school, and then he, I'm not sure what exactly happened, but there was not enough funding to have a dare officer. Then Sandy Hook happened. And Erin Jimenez put these officers called our reserve officers, two which are still in this room today, came to our school, and Erin was running for Chief of Police, and one of his platforms was he was going to put an officer in our building because he believed in the safety of our children. So after he became chief the first time, we came to school and there is Elliot saying, "Good morning, Carla." So from then on, Elliot, you have done an exceptional job of being a role model for people, for our kids, for our staff. You're the epitome of a public servant. And, you know, from eating sardines at the lunch table. Some people still have post-traumatic stress about that. To be the referee for the world champion of kickball every single day, to the dare lock-ins, to everything that was related to dare, but also to serving our school and keeping our school community safe. So on behalf of Drummond Elementary and Hatfield School District, our current staff, and everybody who you have touched in your duration of your career, we wish you much, much success and love as you move on to this next step in your journey. And as Blaze, our Drummond Dragon, says, "Once a dragon, always a dragon."
From, from the city, and what I wanted to make sure that the public knows is the city admin, the board, and the mayor years ago agreed that when an officer puts in more than twenty years of service and retires, they actually take their service pistol with them. And so I wanted to thank actually the prior Aldermen, who some are in the office, and I don't forget that as a young patrolman, why I stayed here. And to the current ones, thank you, and the city admin, also, and the mayors for their support for us, who put our lives on the line every day. I swore that I was not going to get choked up. Promise, I'm very passionate about this. So we have your retired badge, Elliot. And there, it's retired, your D S N one twenty-one, and he retired as a lieutenant. There you go. And then we have the nice box that has the police patch logo for Saint Anne, and then the foam engraved, and then his service pistol. And that service pistol has his D S N and his initials on it. Wanted to give a huge shout-out to Joe Benny, who does a lot of that work. Incredible human being, good part of our staff, too. Incredible human being, good part of our staff too, so thank you to him. And Elliot, there you go, I know it's a lot to hold on to, we'll close this, I'm worried. You wanna put it over here? And then, one final touch that we started doing, these are really expensive. The badge here is actually made out of African mahogany, so it's very expensive for the cut, the wood in itself. And we wanted to make sure that you saw what you're getting here. Elliot Miller, your tour of duty 2000 to 2023. And once again, before we finish off with a standing ovation, I Eric? You hold this. Eric, can you bring that a wrap or? Yes. What, what many people might not know is Bobby Vogel and Elliot and I all grew up together. And, I mean, since we were two, three years old. And so that bond has always stuck with us, but I came from nothing. And both of these guys, their parents gave us a lot of stuff when we had nothing. And neither, neither one of your parents are here for me to tell them how much I appreciated that. But you're gonna be missed, you're already missed, I've called you several times. And I just love you and thank you for what you did for the city. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mayor, city admin, and thanks to the public for coming tonight. Thank you so much.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask the board for a three-minute, I need a first and a second? The meeting is adjourned.